Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Monday, August 5, 2024. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer. Councilmember Novak. Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
To absent Ray Rauer and Novak.
Thank you. All right, well, why don't we adopt the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Motion by Geisler.
Second.
Second by Carlson to adopt the agenda. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we're looking at approving the minutes from the July 23 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong to approve the meeting minutes of July 23, 2024. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is item two, and that is to approve an access agreement with Hobbs Excavating Incorporated for MK Business Park floodplain mitigation. Following completion of the Take Five Oil Change/Shine Car Wash development, it was determined that additional excavation is required to conform with the grading plan and meet city and watershed requirements for floodplain mitigation. The approved grading plan for this development project included placement of fill material within the FEMA and watershed-defined floodplain boundary along Coon Creek, which was to be offset by an equal amount of excavation on the north side. It's a lot of stuff. We're granting an access to a contractor to go across part of Lyons Creek Park, or Lyons Coon Creek Park, including, was it two parking places, I think, to do the mitigation, and they have to return everything to what it was, and there's a contract and a bonding they've got. So, we're looking to approve proposed access agreement with Hobbs Excavating Incorporated for temporary use of Lyons Coon Creek Park to access the north side of Take Five Oil Change/Shine Car Wash development to complete required floodplain mitigation. Could have been here another 10 minutes reading all that. The second item on our consent agenda, which is item three on this evening's agenda, is to approve a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to Coon Rapids North Star Lions for the MMSA softball tournament at Sand Creek Park. The appropriate fees have been paid, the background investigation is being completed by the police department, and the certificate of insurance for liquor liability has been ordered. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. from September 13 through September 15, 2024. Approval of the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license is contingent upon a successful background investigation and the submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. We're looking to approve a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids North Star Lions for use at a military softball tournament to be located at Sand Creek Park, 1008 Northdale Boulevard, on September 13, 14, and 15, 2024, contingent upon a successful background investigation and submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. The third and final item on our consent agenda this evening, which is item four on the agenda, that's to receive the mid-year gambling expenditure report. Staff has received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for January 1 through June 30, 2024, showing gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids and trade area for the six organizations at 17 locations. The combined net profit this period was reported at $840,076.31, with expenditures within the trade area, which includes the city of Coon Rapids, reported at $907,038.25. The reported combined expenditures specifically within the city of Coon Rapids was $954,205.71. A note should be made that the Coon Rapids Lions reported expenditure percentages are skewed due to the fact that they reported a net profit of zero but had expenditures in both the city of Coon Rapids and the trade area. So, we're looking to receive the gambling expenditure report for the first half of 2024, and that's the full consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Geisler. Is there any discussion or questions on this? I have one. Deputy Chief Jacobson, is the police bags tournament going to be done in conjunction with the military softball tournament now? Is that what I heard?
That is what I've heard as well. Yes, the association golf tournament is going to be held in conjunction with the military softball tournament.
Okay, and that is a phenomenal event if you're ever in the area, and that's the weekend of September 13 through 15. They have a very moving opening ceremony, a very great closing ceremony, and they have over 100 vets, I think, playing on these teams, or, I don't know, it's pretty significant. It's an incredible thing. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You convinced me, and with that, I will move that we move on the consent agenda.
Oh, no, we've already got a motion and a second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, so now we're just looking at this, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item five is to conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinance 2312 Comcast cable television franchise. Mr. Brody, it says.
Your Honor, I'd introduce this, but I think we have some guests here in the audience that would have better details on this, so if you want to invite them up to the podium, I think they have a brief presentation before we open the public hearing.
That would be great.
Oh, all right.
All right. The mic is yours.
Your Honor and Council, we're looking at an agreement tonight for a 10-year cable franchise agreement that we've been working on for quite some time. That's why we're glad they're at least 10 years long, so that we're not here very often. But we feel it's a very good agreement. That's where we put the extra time into it, and it was an informal agreement, meaning it didn't have to go into more of a formal negotiation. So, for some of you, you might not have met our cable franchise attorney, Mr. Mike Bradley. I just wanted to introduce him and let you know. I do meet with a lot of other colleagues, and in some cases from around the country, and I just, I wanted to share that, in my opinion, he's one of the best, and we're very fortunate in cable franchise as well as franchise regulation across the country. He's argued in a lot of cases in support on the federal level, so we're very fortunate to have him based out of Woodbury, Minnesota as well. So, like I said, he was a key component and negotiator in this process, and I'll turn it over to him to highlight some of the key points in this thick agreement.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Strauss. Mr. Bradley.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Yeah, thank you, Eric, that was very, very, it's so nice when you get nice introductions, isn't it? You know, I really, I've had the privilege of representing the city of Coon Rapids on cable television, telecommunications matters, now for over 20 years, believe it or not. So, I think I started in the late 90s here at the city. Of course, like Eric said, these agreements really just come around every so often, and so this is probably our third renewal together as a group here, and we're very pleased to bring forward this particular franchise agreement. And I'm sure Mr. Brody will walk you through, but you'll open the hearing and take testimony if there is any, and then at the conclusion, we're, you know, our recommendation is to adopt the cable franchise. Just for your benefit and for the benefit of the public, this is a 10-year franchise agreement. This is the agreement that allows the cable operator, which is, in this case, is Comcast, it allows them to access the public rights-of-way in your cities, and then it has some public benefits, such as the cable television channels that this meeting is being shown on right now. And so, as we look at the agreement and compare it to others in the Twin Cities, and I've had the privilege of negotiating many of them, this is as good or better than any of those agreements throughout the Twin Cities, so we're very pleased with this agreement. It is a 10-year agreement, it is non-exclusive, meaning that if another competitor wants to come in and compete for cable television service, they are able to. This does not preclude anybody from coming in and competing. It calls for a cable franchise fee, it is the maximum allowed by federal law, we're limited at a 5% rate, and that's the rate that is charged throughout the Twin Cities. It also has a new mechanism for PEG, which stands for Public Educational Governmental Access Television. We have a new mechanism for that, and that's in the franchise agreement. And then our television channels now will have three in HD and a total of four standard editions, so it's a really solid agreement. Again, I really appreciate the kind words from Eric, I appreciate the support that Eric, Stephanie, David, Matt have all provided me throughout this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Any questions of council, Mr. Bradley?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
As long as it's, we're open to ask questions before the public hearing. First of all, I want to say, Mr. Strauss and Mr. Bradley, thanks for your efforts on behalf of the city. I know this is a big lengthy agreement, I mean, just the summary is 17 points, and so I haven't read through the whole legal agreement. But I just had one question, a comment maybe first, is I know that, you know, some cable companies are trying to get away from this a little bit, right, and I think we're fortunate in the city that we're going to have this agreement. What is there in this for like out clauses for, and termination for cause on either party? How does that work?
Thank you, Mayor and council member. There isn't an out for the cable operator, this is an agreement for them to provide cable service throughout the term of the agreement.
10 years, okay. All right. And we do like the first, the first point, it's not exclusive.
That's right.
So if-
It's an important point, because sometimes people get confused that, oh, you're granting a franchise, and this is the only franchise you can grant, and that's not true. It's non-exclusive.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, for whatever reason, we don't have another one here. We seem to be lacking competition, but, but, yeah, it's not exclusive. Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Bradley, Mr. Strauss, before we open up the public hearing? All right. And there is a public hearing on this, so we'll open up the public hearing and consider adoption of the Comcast cable television franchise agreement. Is anybody here, and there are a lot of people here this evening, it's getting me curious, but, is there anybody here to speak to the public hearing on the Comcast cable television franchise agreement? One more time, anybody here for the public hearing on the Comcast cable agreement? All right, we're going to close the public hearing and reserve comments to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, I agree, you know, that our, Mr. Strauss and Mr. Bradley have done a great job with this, and with that, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance 2312 Comcast cable franchise agreement and authorize summary publication.
Second.
I have a motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. It seems so anticlimactic for all the work you've done.
Couple of years' worth, it seems.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Councilmember Carlson.
Somebody should tell them things for bringing Valley Sports back so we can watch our Twins.
Is that right? Is it bad?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Because of last Friday.
All right. Probably not specific to us, but, you know, nice. We'll take it.
I've got a sports family, they like to watch the Twins.
All right, well, we're on item six, bid openings and contract awards, consider resolution 24-6-sub-9, awarding a contract for the Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard. Mr. Hanson is here tonight.
I'll take this one. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is for a contract award for that Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard. On July 11, staff received bids, and Ames Construction is the low bidder. They came in at $4,644,956.62. Our engineers estimate for the project was 5.8 million. Ames Construction is well-qualified, their references check out very well, they're well-equipped to perform this project, and we're excited to have them. Construction is planned to start if the contract is awarded this fall, it'll be complete by September 30 of 2025.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I'm aware of the $3.5 million federal grant or funds on this, 1.5 million in state funds. Did the county also step up, and to what degree?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Grischoviac. So, we have 2.4 million in federal regional solicitation funds, and then 3.5 million in state funds, and then the county has also separately through the JPA that is proposed here tonight for approval, have committed 250,000 for the project.
Okay. And the next question then, with the bid amount in the, of this, of 4.6 million or so, does that include our, like, our general contractor to oversee the whole project, or the city's not going to oversee the entire project, is it?
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. We have, there are some design funds, and then there are also, there's also separately an item tonight to approve a construction services agreement with a design firm that developed the plans and specifications for the project, and we are going to be working with MINDOT to use the additional funding provided by the state to cover their costs as well.
Okay, and then lastly?
Carry on.
So, we've been at this for a while, right, at least a couple of years, or maybe even before that, but when we first applied for state funds and we got it, there was a window, and I thought that window, correct, you must be wrong, but I thought the window was somewhere around June of 2024.
Yeah, thank you for the question there. That's the federal funds, and we needed to have the contract awarded by this time in order to make use of those, so.
But we're in August.
Yep.
Well, my question was, I did read that somewhere, that we had to have this awarded by June 2024.
We needed to have the project approved, which we did.
Okay.
By that same time.
Okay. Just things I picked up in various meetings, you know, over the last few years, because I knew we were kind of on the wire on this, I just wanted to make sure we didn't fall into a little trap there.
Mr. Mayor.
That was a much better understanding than I had. I was thinking we had to have it built by a certain date, so. Councilmember Carlson.
Question for Mr. Hanson. Mr. Hanson, the city has, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm 50/50 on that, city has about, what, $340,000 into this project?
That's correct.
So, with this nice bid and some of these, some of, you know, the funds coming, federal, state, county, are we going to be working on recouping that 340,000?
Yes, we will be working with MINDOT to recoup those funds for the design cost.
Try to make this a zero contribution on Coon Rapids end?
Yes, plus the construction phase services, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Hanson? Somebody want to move this forward?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 24-6-sub-9, awarding a contract to Ames Construction in the amount of $4,644,956.62 for project 24-6, Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard project.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Excited about this, I mean, we've been talking about this for a lot of years, it's going to make a nice, nice safe access across Coon Rapids Boulevard, right there at Zilla Street, where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, kids and things like this. The bridge design is going to look great, we've got all that new housing right there, it's a real nice improvement for the city of Coon Rapids. Thankful to the team for securing so many funds on behalf of the city, and look forward to getting the project going.
Absolutely. When Councilmember Johnson went off and went on to become county attorney, this was one of the things on his shortlist that said, make sure you get that pedestrian bridge done, so. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hanson, on that. Item seven is to consider, planning case 24-9, consider adoption of ordinance number 2308 rezoning 10701 Butternut Street Northwest, September Sun Architecture LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I would make a motion to remove this from the table.
Second.
Ah, very good. We have a motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson to remove this from the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that is removed from the table, thank you. Mr. Patzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So, excuse me, this is the request to rezone from office to moderate density residential at Butternut Street and University Avenue. Based on the council's previous feedback, city staff have talked with folks in the county highway department and received verbal support for a write-in, write-out on University Avenue for a project that would occupy the site, and so in response, the applicant has provided a concept plan showing what that write-in, write-out would look like, and changing around their initial proposed site plan. The site plan is currently planned to be heard by the Planning Commission at the August 15 Planning Commission meeting, so this, if the city council were to approve the rezoning, the applicant would fill in the details of this concept plan and present that before the Planning Commission for site plan approval. So, what's being proposed is a write-in, write-out access onto University with a turn lane on University Avenue in order to access the development, and then the site would propose to be flipped with the drive lane now along and parallel to University Avenue. So, with this, the city staff do recommend a motion to adopt the ordinance rezoning the site from office to moderate density residential, and this was discussed in the work session, so that's pretty much all the presentation I have, thank you.
But then, to be clear, though, we're not looking at the site plan tonight, we're just looking at the rezoning, and we just potentially are getting a write-in and a write-out on University. We don't know that for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, correct. Whether or not we get a write-in and write-out in University, the staff has been working with the applicant, and both are on board with the write-in, write-out, but the county has not given official approval yet.
Okay. All right. And then, further, just kind of to share, because I'm assuming that some people are here from that neighborhood, the, when we discussed this in the work session, there's trust in staff that if we rezone this, that they would hold their feet to the fire, that they wouldn't approve a site plan unless it has write-in and write-out from University, but that's not 100% either. Correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. Staff believe that there are grounds to recommend denial of the site plan application if the access that is ultimately proposed is onto Butternut rather than onto University. However, the answer isn't 100% yes on whether that would, is something that would hold up legally, thank you.
And I'm not, I'm not meaning to belabor this, I just want to make sure that, we had a lot of information in that workshop, and I wanted to get, I wanted to get as much of it out here that it seems important. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Patzner?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
So, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, the county said verbally that it looked okay. Do you know how long it'll be before we get a final answer from the county on that?
Thank you, Councilmember Carlson, I might defer to Mark Hanson, our engineer.
Mr. Hanson.
So, I think the next step, like we talked about in the work session, would be for the engineer and the architect team to work on some detailed plans that the county can look more specifically at, so hopefully they can get that done in the next week or two, and then we can get that over to the county, and it wouldn't take them more than a week or two to also review it, so it might be three to four weeks, I would say.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I'm sorry, so when's that, when's that site plan hearing come?
So, currently, the site plan is scheduled for the August 15 Planning Commission meeting. However, the applicant does have the ability to waive the required timeline for that, so the site plan hearing could be pushed out until the September 19 Planning Commission meeting.
I thought it'd be kind of nice to hear from the county for that site plan hearing.
Mayor and council, I, you know, it's sort of an awkward dance with some of these planning applications, because the statute regarding how to rezone something doesn't necessarily give us the full details for a development like this, that would be nice to know ahead of time, but one of the things that I should mention is, you know, the next step in the process is, of course, to have staff review their site plan. It'll go to Planning Commission, Planning Commission then would be able to make a decision about the site plan itself, and we will make it clear to Planning Commission where sort of council's thoughts were on this whole process. I think the developers heard that pretty loud at this point. As a part of that site plan approval, they could make conditions upon that, such as, one condition could be Anoka County approves a write-in, write-out on University, could be other setback issues, could be a number of things on their engineering comments, and things like that, that the Planning Commission could include. The next step in this process would be that the council would ultimately need to approve a final plat for the property, because they're going to subdivide it, and so there'll be another opportunity for council to review it, and if there are any lingering concerns at that time, within the confines of what we're allowed to do in the state statute, I think there would be an opportunity to ask more questions at that time, or to, you know, have other considerations as far as the site plan goes. So, we're not going to have 100% certainty with regard to where the county's at, I think everybody's sort of working with good intentions toward a solution that's going to work for all parties involved, and I think we can get there, it's not a guarantee, you know, these, could be something quirky in the distances or the design, but if that's the case, then it might be going back to the drawing board, so to speak, on the development itself, you know, we're sort of speculating about what might come, because it's important to understand as relates to how this particular development might impact the general area, it's a very busy area, there's a lot of residential, there's a lot of access on the university already, so I think it fits in that context, it's just we don't have the benefit of all the details yet, so it's a little bit of leap in faith as far as that part goes, but I think we can get there.
I think the only reason this is zoned office now is because it was anticipated to have an in-and-out from University, and if something would have already been there, obviously, it would have gotten the curb cut, just like SA has on the other side.
Yep.
It, only because it hadn't been developed yet, the county didn't do it, so I think it's entirely reasonable for the county to put that access in, and I would say that there's really good grounds for it. And as long as everybody understands that that's the caveat, that that needs to happen, and I think, and I think that would need to happen before we ever approved anything office there either, you know, you know, so, we're not there yet. But I think that's the reality, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's never 100% certainty, right? Because if we don't change this zoning, we could get sued. If we do change the zoning and then don't approve a site plan, we could get sued. There's a whole litany of things that could potentially happen that could be out of our control, so there's never 100% certainty of what would happen. So, what we're doing is we're looking to say, what is the best and highest use of this land? What is the best way to use it that is compatible with the neighborhood? What are the things that we can put in place to help ensure that it's done that way, right? We have trust in our staff, our staff absolutely has heard us loud and clear that we don't want an access on Butternut. We have our county partners that we've talked to, they are hearing pretty loud and clear that we don't want access on Butternut, and that they're open to that conversation of the access on University. You know, so there's so many things that we're putting in place, you know, could that developer come back with a different site plan that doesn't quite match? Excuse me, but that's where we trust our staff, we trust our Planning Commission, and the Title 11 regulations that we have for development that would ensure us to make sure that all of those dots are, eyes are dotted, t's are crossed, you know, because one of the requirements is traffic in the neighborhood is a consideration of a site plan, and so I believe we have enough controls and mitigation and- And so, I believe we have enough controls and mitigation in place that we can be reasonably assured that we can direct development on this parcel, if it's zone moderate density residential, in a way that we aren't going to get access on Butternut. So, from my perspective, I support this, because I, housing is a good thing. It's adding to the tax base, which helps all of our residents in the city. I, it's overall a good thing than, you know, to keep the city moving forward. So, unless people have more comments, I'd be ready to make a motion.
Why don't we just hang on a second, make sure we get our questions out?
Okay.
It always gets more awkward when it's during discussion rather than just general questions.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Patzner, could you, the other thing we talked about was if it was determined by council that this was not a reasonable zoning change, and it was denied, then the developer, it would basically start his clock all over if he wanted to reapply, but would he be able to reapply with the, he wouldn't reapply with the same thing then, would he? He would want to change it up if he'd been denied, right?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. The application would be denied, and then the staff would submit a recommendation of denial for the site plan, based on the fact that housing does not meet the Office zoning standards. So, that application would likely be denied as well, and that does end the clock. So, if the applicant were to reapply, that would be a new application with a new timeline, essentially. They would not be able to bring forward another housing development with an expectation of approval. It would need to be an entirely different concept in that case.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I'm sorry. So, if we deny this, they can't come back with the same, they can't just reapply for the same, after we've had, hopefully, county approval? If the county looked at this plan and said, "Yeah, great," and then they reapply, they couldn't reapply with the same plan that we showed tonight, that we were showing tonight?
I see. Thank you, Councilmember Carlson. I think I may have misunderstood the question. I don't know that there's anything that's stopping someone from applying over and over for the same, the same request, the same application, other than the fact that we have application fees, and it would cost them money to do so, with the expectation that it probably wouldn't lead to success the second time, if it didn't lead to success the first time. So, if the application were denied, and they were to come back in six months with another application for rezoning to moderate density residential, and, you know, council had a different idea of what they'd like to see at that site, then would like to vote to approve that, that's absolutely something that could happen in a timeline.
I think it's very clear, you know, what our expectation is, right? Nothing on Butternut, you know, off of Butternut, on University. So, I don't think that the applicant should be too confused as to what, you know, what it is that we're looking for, especially if the county comes through and approves the write-in, write-out, write-out on University Avenue. And this is a difficult situation for all of us, because on one hand, you know, we, of course, have trust in our staff, but we don't know what the heck the county's going to do. We, it sounds like the county is leaning towards it, but we don't have any guarantees, and I know there are no guarantees in life, but we're kind of, I know that's our difficulty, because, of course, we trust our staff, but I don't know what the heck the county's going to do.
Mr. Mayor. And I have no idea what we're going to do. I'm as curious, I'm as curious to see how this vote goes as anybody. Councilmember Armstrong.
If someone could refresh my memory, when this was originally proposed, the county said no to an access on University. Does anybody recall why they said no the first time?
Or who?
Well, it's typical for the county to want to limit access on their higher-volume streets, so that's usually the position that they'll take initially to most developments.
So, that's kind of their default answer, no?
They always say no first.
Councilmember Armstrong, I'm sorry, carry on.
Well, honestly, that's my concern, I mean, if the default answer is no, and then all of a sudden, we've got a tentative yes, we don't have a full yes. Quite honestly, and again, we've heard it 100 times, and I will, I will say it as well, I trust staff 100%. I, you guys do a fantastic job. My concern is, after it leaves staff and goes out there into the county and whoever else, I know we have some checks and balances in place when it comes back, but...
It doesn't go out that way.
Well, the decision on the access is up to the county, though.
Correct.
That's what you mean, right?
Yes, correct. So, that's where my concern is. I have a, I have a, I, it's the old trust, trust but verify, and I don't want to be looking at voting yes on something that I don't know I'm going to get my constituents exactly what I voted yes on. So, that's my concern.
And I guess, and what we've been assured by staff is they understand that the site plan is a no-go without write-in, write-out from University. Mr. Stemwell.
Correct, and I think, again, there will be other opportunities to have this in front of you when the plat comes by, Planning Commission, and so forth, even though council wouldn't vote on the site plan unless there were some, you know, variances being requested and that sort of thing. I guess the point I was going to make is, with regard to the county's answer, if the, if the council denies the rezoning, there really isn't a purpose for the applicant to move forward on the site plan, which sort of suspends that conversation with the county. So, you're not going to probably get the answer about the access without the site plan, you don't get the site plan without some assurance that they can move forward on the application process. So, we could still kind of talk about it conceptually with them, but until they say, "Well, here's, here's the development, here's the access," those sorts of things, I don't know you're going to get a firm answer without the full package. We don't get the full package without the site plan. So, I mean, I think there could be some conversation in the meantime about it, but again, if I'm the county, until you put a plan in front of me and says, "This is what we want," nope, you got to move it 10 feet that way, and we're good, that, you know, that's when they're going to give you the full approval. And so, it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg, as far as that goes, in my mind, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
So, Mr. Stemwell, I mean, I mean, they have us a proposed site plan, so if we did deny this, the county won't look at that, and the county won't make a decision?
The mayor and council, Councilmember Carlson, they could look at it, but again, what the county wants to look at is sort of final plans, not speculation about what the plan might be. And so, at that point, I feel like they'd be looking at a speculative plan, and then at that point, I'd say, if I were them, come back to me with the final design, with some specific dimensions, and then we might, you know, give you some feedback about, "Well, we'll approve it if you do this," and then they'll have to sort of resubmit that, is generally the way it goes. And, you know, I'm getting a little bit out of my depth here, as I'm not the city engineer, as you well know, but if, you know, Mr. Hammer, Mr. Hanson want to comment on sort of how that process works, I would say feel free. Is that a fair characterization, Mark?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, we got to get into the details of the plans. It's going to take a little bit of time, it's going to take some weeks, but I think that's what they're going to want to see. But we're going to have conversations before that, showing them kind of where this is leading to, so hopefully, we'll get some more assurances as we go along in short order.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischowiak.
Appreciate all the conversation on this, I just have a question for Mr. Patzner, but before I do, I mean, I appreciate the work and everything, your explanation of the city manager and the explanation, especially of yours, because you've been on council for a long time, Councilmember Geisler, and the rest of the council. And we definitely welcome development and quality investment in our community, there's no question about that. But my question then is, we don't have any assurances on the, on the access on, on University. I think that's been our expectation the whole time, that we have assurances of no access, or a write-in and left-out only on Butternut. We don't have assurances of either right now, still, like we didn't a couple of weeks ago. So, to my question, I'll get there, is if we denied the ordinance change tonight, can the applicant get assurance from the county? Let's say it happens tomorrow. Let's say they get assurance from the county tomorrow that they're going to allow access on University. Couldn't that applicant come right back to us next week and say, "Okay, now we have access, and now we'll agree to that only"? There isn't anything holding them back from bringing it right back to us?
Thank you, Councilmember Grischowiak. I think you're absolutely correct that they, there isn't anything legally keeping them from doing that, but I think that financially, the applicant would need to spend the money to fully develop the plans in order to get that assurance from the county, and it would be hard to have incentive to do so without knowing that there's, they would be able to get approval of the rezoning from the city council. So, I think it kind of suspends them in a way where they need, you know, assurance from one body to get approval from the other, but assurance from the other body to get approval from the first. And I think that puts them in a situation where I don't know that it's likely that they would do so.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, I would just add on to what Mr. Patzner said, you know, because we're kind of in a little bit of a stalemate. It's, who do we, where do we go, right? We cannot legally change a zoning contingent upon a site plan. Legally, we can't do it. They have to be separate. So, we have to be looking at, you know, how can we do that? Well, if we want to have that applicant move forward and try and get assurances from the county, they need final plans. That means there's an awful lot of time and money and effort put into all of the site plan drawings, all of the engineering specifications, with zero assurance that they could build it, because it's not zoned to build that. And, you know, it's like they would have to trust us that we would pass that down the road if they did everything, right? And are they willing to take that gamble, right? Because if it's January, it's a different council, right? So, we have the ability to pass this tonight, which gives that developer the assurance that if their site plan meets every requirement of the city and the county, that it would go through, and that's where our staff ensures that it's going to meet every requirement, which means that there isn't an adverse impact of traffic to the neighborhood, as one of the key ones, that our Planning Commission will look at everything in our Title 11 and ensure that that happens, and that we've got the right build and the right site plan. And then, they have to have the plat that comes back to us, and if their site plan doesn't do what we want, we can deny that plat, which means it can't get built. So, there are so many things that we can do along our path to allow this to move forward, trusting our staff, trusting our process, trusting our Title 11 regulations, trusting our Planning Commission to be able to move and get this done, to have a development with a write-in and write-out on University. If we say no tonight, it's dead, in my opinion. If I was the developer, why would I spend thousands of dollars to build plans and build a site plan and all the engineering drawings when I have no assurance, especially, you know, that this council would actually approve it? So, I'm one that I have faith in our process, I have faith in our staff, I have faith that our Title 11 regulations are there to be able to get us that development that we want. So, that's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Yes, well, I want to kind of back, Councilmember Geisler's point on, boy, if this was like, we could approve it with conditions, man, this would be easy. This meeting would have been done, this would have been done a long time ago, but we can't do that. And this really isn't with me, it's not about the housing, you know, it's about traffic on Butternut. So, that's all this is to me. And again, I'm still torn between trust that staff is going to get it done and trust of the county, so...
And it's difficult to talk, when you're talking, when you're couching all your comments with a potential lawsuit over zoning, you know?
I think, council, you're doing a good job of sort of explaining, we are going to, if you are going to deny it, we're going to have to find some findings. I mean, there's traffic as it's zoned now, if there's a development that goes in, you know, we can maybe brainstorm a little bit, but I think, you know, I think City Manager explained it best, that sometime, we have to sort of take that maybe initial leap and then allow this to sort of develop. It's certainly our intentions to see a write-in, write-out, it's everybody's intentions, I, you know, I truly believe that's the developers, too. So, like I said, I think you guys are doing a good job. We talk it through, we make a decision, and then we're going to go with it. We'll see what, you know, what happens in the end.
And the only thing I would, I would take an issue with is, they still own the land, you know, they're still going to be, you know, so they're going to have to try and find out something to develop it to work, for it to work. I just think that, I don't, I don't want to be just no, because I don't, I think we're responsible for orderly development, and I think this can be an orderly development, assuming we can get that write-in and write-out on University.
Mr. Mayor.
Really curious to know how I'm going to vote.
Just, you know, from a little bit, I spent 16 years on planning, so I understand that process as well. And when we're doing a site plan review, the Planning Commission, they're going to be looking at all kinds of things, but even before that site plan gets to the Planning Commission, our staff goes through things with a fine-tooth comb, and if you remember, looking at all of the different conditions, typically, there must meet all of engineering comments. You know, our engineering team will go through and dot i's, cross t's, and say, "Well, no, you got to change drainage here, you've got to move this, you've got to do that," to ensure that that site plan truly does meet all of our requirements. Our safety teams, our police and our fire will look at our site plans to make sure that they can, you know, get their vehicles in and out, that it meets the needs. We'll look at it from a traffic perspective. All of that stuff happens at a staff level, and staff has got to be good with that, even before it gets to planning. You know, so there is an awful lot of competent people in our staff, working on our team, that I trust are going to be able to help make and guide that developer to the right answer.
Yeah, I don't see us overturning over any new ground here. I'm thinking we should probably do a motion and a discussion, but, Councilmember Grischowiak, did you want to?
No, I can reserve it for...
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
In Planning Case 24-9, I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2308, rezoning the subject property from Office to Moderate Density Residential.
Second.
We have a motion, was that a second by Carlson?
Your honor, not to add sort of further confusion to this, but I'm not sure why. We normally have three stated findings for these particular things. We discuss them in the memo about, you know, would not have an adverse impact on the surrounding area, it's compatible with adjacent land uses and zoning, and it's consistent with future land use guidance and policies of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, but those findings are not in the memo, they're in the body of the memo, we talk about them, and staff is recommending that we meet with all those three, so I don't know if the motioner would agree to those three stated conditions.
I would agree.
And I apologize.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Carlson, I was just looking for what those...
Yeah, they're...
So, is it the four things, that the land use policy?
It's the three things above are discussed sort of in general, I apologize.
Under analysis.
The analysis portion.
The effect on public health, safety, order, convenience, and general welfare, the effect on precedent and the potential surrounding land uses, and whether the proposal is in conformance with the city's comprehensive land use plan in any applicable development district. So, add those to the motion.
So, that was the motion. Councilmember Carlson, was that your second?
That was, yeah, I was just going to second that. Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and now we have...
Mr. Mayor, just one more question, Mr. Brody.
Well, yeah, we got time for discussion, because Councilmember Grischowiak had something, too. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Grischowiak.
Well, now you're running the meeting.
No, you know what? No, it's my turn.
It is your turn.
Mr. Brody, so, okay, so these additions to the, to the motion, then, this makes it, gives us a more, a clearer path as we go on to the next step with this, if it gets passed, we go on to the next step, does this make a clearer path for the city?
Correct. These are typically the findings we make when we make... Correct. These are typically the findings we make when we make a zoning change. That's the conditions you have to find in order to make a zoning change. So, we're just articulating those. We made the, or staff had that in the discussion point, or discussion part of the memo, but for somehow it did not translate into the recommendation from staff.
So, when we go back to site plan again, these things could be...
Site plan has different criteria. They have a series of nine of them that they have to examine, and so they'll look at those specific nine factors when they're looking at the site plan. And those are in a different section of code, but they have even more specific findings that need to be made, and conditions that could be placed on a site plan.
Some there it has, somewhere in there it has something to do with traffic.
Sure, I can even tell you what the...
That's the key point with me, Mr. Brody?
Yep.
If I can give you a second here, I can kind of give you, if that would be helpful, sort of, site plans have to be compatible with surround, surrounding land uses. They have to preserve existing natural features whenever possible, achieve a safe and efficient circulation system, not place excessive traffic loads on local streets, conform to city's plans for parked streets, service drives and walkways, conform to city's comprehensive land use plan, achieve a maximum of safety, convenience, and amenities, so sufficient landscaping to reasonably screen, not create detrimental disturbances to surrounding properties, and shall meet all requirements of this title, which is Chapter XI.
Thank you.
Councilmember Griswiek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's been a lot of terms used here that make me uncomfortable. Like, we've got a trust, and it's awkward, and there's speculation, and we have no assurances. So, all of that kind of leads me to, to a no vote on this, especially, we don't have assurance from the county, and we don't even have assurance from the city that a right-in, left-out will work on Butternut for fire equipment and things of that nature. Snowplows and, and things like that. So, without any of those assurances, I, I can't, I can't vote to, to approve this ordinance change.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I guess you do have assurances. That is what the site plan process is. The site plan, Mr. Brody just gave you those nine conditions, that that site plan must meet those for approval, you know? And so, if, if the pork chop doesn't allow for safety vehicles, that site plan won't get approved. If the site plan is putting traffic on Butternut, and that's too much traffic on a city neighborhood street, the local streets, that one condition, the site plan wouldn't get approved. So, I'm, I'm concerned that you're saying that staff isn't going to follow our Title XI, right?
No, that's not what he's saying.
Well, I mean, that's what it, the person, when you bring it to say you don't have assurances, when I've got the rules, and our staff and planning commission do follow the rules, that should give you some assurance that that rule gets followed. And so, that's my concern.
So, no, I appreciate that, but we have that pork chop type situation over there at the end of Adesett. It doesn't prohibit people from taking a right-hand turn there. There's a sign, no right-hand turn, but people take a right-hand turn there. And I, the city, it doesn't give me the assurance that they can construct that pork chop intersection that eliminates that altogether, you know, and have traffic flow backed out to university, and specifically, traffic flow into the existing businesses.
Yes.
It, so, we, we don't have the assurance.
Well, you have an assurance that the site plan would not get approved if that's how it's built.
Right. The site plan could say, okay, here's how we have to make that pork chop to make all this work.
The site plan can really only get approved if there's in and out on university, according to all of the criteria.
Well, if, not necessarily. You, you even said if, if the traffic count doesn't warrant it on Butternut Street, if they decide that you can't get the emergency vehicles in and out of a right pork chop, then if the traffic allows it on Butternut Street, or if it, if it doesn't, there isn't, there's, it, it's not a hundred percent.
Nothing's a hundred percent.
No, well...
Nothing.
No.
Right, so.
As the owner of that land, they, they own that land. It's zoned office. You would think they would be able to go to the county and say, we need an in and out. There's nothing we can do there unless we get in and out on university. It's really funny. I was, I was gonna vote yes until that last little exchange. So, all right. Is there any further discussion on this? Any new, any new ground to overturn? Okay, we have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance number 2308, rezoning 10701 Butternut Street Northwest, September Sun Architecture LLC. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The nays have it, and the motion is denied. Based on, based on, Mr. Brown.
Based on?
Mayor and Council, I think you actually, we would suggest you do the reverse now, which is there'd be a motion to deny the rezoning based on findings that...
Oh, the Mr. Brown's handing out.
Mr. Brown is...
You're awesome.
Okay, because all we've done so far is we just haven't approved it.
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe if Mr. Patzner or Mr. Brown want to explain what was passed out.
Did you just hand me four copies of the same thing?
I, I did, yes. I had more. These are, at the bottom of the first page there, there are a total of three findings you can use in a motion to deny, just to tie the denial back to comprehensive plan policies.
Oh.
So, first one, that it's not compatible with adjacent commercial and low-density residential land uses, that it's not consistent with the Northdale University commercial node, that the rezoning would add residential uses into an existing commercial node, and then third, that it would cause negative traffic impacts to the surrounding area.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Griswiek? If someone needs to make this motion, I...
Yep.
So, Mr. Mayor, in Planning Case 24-9, I make a motion to the city council, deny ordinance number 2308, rezoning the subject property from office to moderate-density residential, based on the following findings. One, the proposed rezoning to moderate-density residential is not compatible with adjacent commercial and low-density residential land uses. The rezoning is not consistent with the role of the Northdale University commercial node, and thus would not, and thus would not meet the intent of land use policy 5.1, as articulated in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Two, the rezoning would add residential uses to an existing commercial node, removing the opportunity for added commercial density within the node, and encouraging commercial development in strips rather than nodes, thus not meeting the intent of land use policy 5-2, as articulated in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And number three, the rezoning would cause negative traffic impacts on the surrounding area by adding residential traffic with, whose most direct route for traveling north or west from the site would be the use of Butternut Street, a residential street, to connect from University Avenue to Northdale Boulevard, both of which are arterial streets. This would not meet the intent of traffic policy 1-2, as articulated in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Second?
We have a motion by Griswiek and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'm just afraid we've just opened ourselves up for litigation, because we are grasping at straws with these findings. So...
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. One, nay. Councilmember Geisler? We okay?
Yeah.
You were nodding your head like maybe there was something else going on. All right. All right. New business. Item eight, consider Planning Case 24-20, consider an amendment to a PUD for the Wedgewood Apartments, Kleinman Realty Company, 10313 Hanson Boulevard. Thank you all for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Patzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, ready to talk about something else?
Sure.
So, I have before you a request for an amendment to an existing planned unit development. This is the Wedgewood Apartments on Hanson Boulevard, just south of Coon Rapids Boulevard. It's zoned office with a PUD overlay, and there is an existing fifty-eight unit apartment complex on the site that was approved back in nineteen eighty-five as a PUD. The planned unit development document specifies that the approval is for a fifty-eight unit apartment complex. The applicant would like to add a fifty-ninth unit to the apartment complex, which does require an amendment to the PUD because of that specification. What the applicant is proposing, there is an existing pool house on the site, and they are proposing to convert that pool house into a fifty-ninth residential unit, or eighty-eight percent of that pool house into a residential unit, and leave the other twelve percent for storage of pool equipment. The request would not significantly change the density of the site, but because the site is closest to a high-density residential development, staff did look at the high-density residential code requirements to make sure that nothing that was being proposed brought it well outside of what's allowed in high-density residential. The land use for the site is commercial, or I'm sorry, residential mixed use, which does allow between ten and fifty units per acre. Right now, the site is eighteen point two units an acre. What is being proposed would change from eighteen point two to eighteen point five units an acre, which is within the HDR zoning district and the guidance. Staff also looked at parking. There are one-hundred thirty-one spaces existing, which is two-point-two-five spaces per unit, which meets exactly the requirement in the HDR district. What's being proposed is to add two parking spaces on a landscaping island that is, that is no longer being used for landscaping currently, to keep that parking at two-point-two-five spaces per unit, so that continues to meet the high-density residential standard for the site, and maintains the existing parking ratio. And then, there would be fifty-eight covered parking spots, and the remainder would be uncovered. As far as the unit, it does meet the standards in the high-density residential section of the zoning code. And just to clarify, there's no requirement that what's being proposed meets the high-density residential standards. However, city staff did want to ensure that there was some sort of framework for understanding whether this was generally a proposal that is, you know, continues to allow the development to meet, or, or to, to kind of be within standard high-density residential style development, and, and help staff understand whether there would be any red flags with what's being proposed. So, the unit is five-hundred-six square feet, which is eighty-eight percent of the five-hundred-seventy-six square foot building. The remainder would only be able to be accessed from the outside and would be used for storage of pool equipment. And the unit is larger than the minimum unit for, or minimum finished floor area for a studio unit in the high-density residential district. And I also included some pictures of the pool house as it stands right now, including the interior, which looks like some minor interior work has been done. But they are going to be requesting a building permit should the planned unit development change be approved, and they would need a building permit approval in order to get a certificate of occupancy for residential use. So, with that, city staff do recommend approval of the amendment to the planned unit development with conditions, including the addition of the two additional parking spaces in order to continue meeting high-density residential parking requirements. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Mr. Patzner, do we know any of the history on this? I read through all the minutes from nineteen eighty-five. There's no way they would have allowed this in eighty-five because this was already eight percent over our H, our high-density at that time. And there was quite a battle over the amenities, because there was favorable financing on this, so they were requiring a gazebo, they were requiring a volleyball court, they were requiring, so, apparently, they've made some changes in the amenities, and they must have added a, a pool and a, and a community room at some point. And now, they want to turn the community into a, community room into living space. Do we know any of that history?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the, pretty much everything that was included in the, in the minutes and the discussion and staff report from the original nineteen eighty-five approval is known to staff. However, staff chose to use the, the current city code requirements to judge the application, just because those requirements are clearer than, than what was required back in nineteen eighty-five, and also more relevant to, to newer development right now. However, staff are aware of the, the items that you mentioned.
Okay. Because the other, the other thing I wonder is, is it meets, it might meet the, the quantity, the, the density. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't let somebody build two secure apartment buildings and then just an outbuilding over there, and, and, oh, yeah, and that's just another apartment over there. It just seems really arbitrary, and, and it just seems, and, you know, they built it with fifty-eight units, fifty-eight garages. To me, that was an ordered development. To me, this is trying to, you know, this is trying to squeeze another apartment out of what should be an amenity for the apartment building. You know, it's, it's like, would be, would be okay with them adding plumbing and windows to a couple of the garages and going, here's another unit over here. I, I guess that's how I look at it. But other than that, I don't have a very strong opinion about it, so. Any questions of Mr. Patzner?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Patzner. Yeah, okay, so this is Net-a-Guard was the builder, way back in nineteen eighty-five. How long have the current owners owned this complex? This, this isn't the same folks from nineteen eighty-five, is it?
Thank you, Commissioner Carlson. I don't know exactly how long the current owners have owned the building, but no, it is not the same folks.
As long as I know it's not the same. I don't mind the, the additional number by house. I think it's kind of strange. I'm guessing the reason why there's probably a bathroom and plumbing there is probably because it's supposed to be a community room, right? A, a nice place for the residents to gather. And so, I kind of wonder, and I, I guess it's up to them, but are they taking that away? Was that also one of those amenities that they were supposed to provide to the residents back in nineteen eighty-five? Is that something they're pulling away from the residents so they can squeeze in one more apartment unit? I guess that's my only question or concern, is that they're just, yeah, they're taking something away in amenity like a, you know, like a party room, or there had to have been some reason for it to have plumbing in it.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlson. I, I'm actually not clear if the applicant is here tonight. They may not be, in order to, to answer that better than, than I might be able to, but my understanding was, according to my conversations with the applicant, that that space had not been, recently been being used as a community room, whether or not, you know, I, I don't know how long that's been the case, but, but that's essentially my understanding of the current use of the space.
And, and the, and our information says, you know, pool house.
Right.
But I, I guess that could, community room, pool house. It's, it's near the pool, I guess we'd call it a pool house, but, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Any questions of Mr. Patzner?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, one question for Mr. Patzner. There's gonna be, where does that extra parking go? Do they need extra parking? Can you show that one? Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Griswiek. So, I don't know if you can see what I have up on the screen right now.
I can.
So, there was a landscaping island that had a tree on it up until, I would say, six or seven years ago. And I don't know the reason for the removal of that tree, but the landscaping island doesn't have a tree on it anymore. And so, the applicant is proposing to put those two extra parking spaces, remove that landscaping island, put those two extra parking spaces there. And they're, they're proposing to do that on, on staff request. Staff, staff did request that they add those parking spaces.
Okay. And the reason, I just, I was wondering if that would change the, the total open space requirement that we have, and it doesn't look like it would, so that has no bearing, so. All right. I was thinking this was a no-brainer until you brought up those questions, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I drove, I drove over there, drove all around it this morning, and I thought, you know, I, I thought it was funny when you said no longer being used for landscaping. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of it that hasn't been landscaped, you know, and I kind of wonder how they line up with our original PUD and our original requirements for things. Okay. Thoughts? Any other questions for Mr. Patzner?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Looking at what was in the minutes from nineteen eighty-five, was not overly enlightening. And one of the key things is that there weren't really, unless I did back to find Title XI from nineteen eighty-five, which I did not do, it seems like there, the planned unit development criteria was somewhat lacking. So, with that... development criteria was somewhat lacking. So with that, we can't even say, well, this doesn't comply with what nineteen eighty-five is, because it kind of does, because there weren't those rules and regulations as, you know, as we've been talking, our Title XI code for buildings is very tight and we've put high standards and high expectations in. For this, you know, if there had been, that these were the amenities that were required for the PUD approval, those kinds of things, I would lend and go, well, wait a minute, you can't take away amenities. But that wasn't part of that original approval. That's where I think we have the leeway and... Is it weird that there would be, you know, one unit that would be kind of standalone? Maybe, maybe it could be used for the management of the, of the part of the complex. You know, so I think that there could be some positives with it versus, you know, if they aren't using the building as a community room, you can't force them to have it as an amenity. So I'm not thrilled with it, but I'm not overly opposed to it either. I could, there doesn't seem to be a compelling reason, really, to say no, in my opinion.
All right. Well, Mr. Mayor? Councilman Griswiek.
In planning case twenty-four-ten, I make a motion to the city council approve an amendment to the planned use development. Approved in planning case eighty-five-seventy-one to allow a fifty-ninth unit apartment project, subject to the following conditions: compliance to Title XI of city code, the additional residential us, huh, unit shall meet all applicable building codes and ensure criteria are met for the building inspections division to issue a certificate of occupancy, and three, two additional parking places will be added to the site, such that a parking ratio of two point two five spaces or more per residential unit be maintained.
Second.
Yeah, there's a motion by Griswiek and a second by Geisler. And that was in planning case twenty-four dash twenty, correct?
I will make a correction. It is planning case twenty-four dash twenty.
Yeah, okay.
I agree.
All right. And, yeah, and I, my thoughts that it wouldn't have been approved had nothing to do with PUD requirements. It was all about the tone of the council. When you read all through the minutes of the council, there was, you know, they were very insistent on those amenities. And I just, and I just don't think this is an orderly way to develop this. We can't force them to use it as a community room, but I also think it's irresponsible to just arbitrarily make an outbuilding one of their rental units. But again, that's just me. So is there any further, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Two opposed, Carlson and Cook, three. So that motion carries. And item nine, planning case twenty-four dash twelve, consider a site plan, Holly Street Industrial, ninety-two fifty-five, Holly Street, JHM Medical Park LLC. Mr. Behringer?
Mayor, councilmembers, I have before you a site plan proposal here for what we're calling Holly Street Industrial. This is on a vacant two-point-eight-two acre lot in Port Evergreen and River Rapids overlay districts. Surrounding properties include some industrial and, and commercial properties, including the new Fresenius Clinic to the southeast of the subject property. So what's being proposed is a two-story, just under forty thousand square foot warehouse office building. As discussed in previous work sessions, the, the loading dock is facing Holly Street. This is due to some constraints of the, the shape of the lot. This means that the, the parking and main entrances then are on the reverse side in the rear of the lot. Landscaping meets all of our requirements, includes fifty trees, one hundred and thirty-five shrubs, and the developer will also be putting in a six-foot sidewalk along Holly Street. Looking at our elevations, starting with our northeast elevation, that's our, our main entrance facing Quick Trip and then Coon Rapids Boulevard behind that. Includes two entrances. This is going to be built for two tenants potentially, as well as a good number of windows and different colors. Stone facade is there as well. Northwest is facing another industrial building, OEB office furniture. Shifting around to the south part of the building, facing Spring Brook, towards Fresenius there, we've got two layers of, of windows. The lower layer is screened by a good number of, what, maybe arbivited trees there, evergreen trees. And then southwest facing Holly Street, as I said, that's the loading dock. They do have a number of windows added to the second story of that. I say second story in quotations. This will be all one story inside. And then the lower left of that elevation, you see our trash enclosure there. Developer has said they're going to make this look and feel stylistically very similar to the Fresenius building here. This is a recent photo I took out on site. We do have a number of flexibility requests with this development, starting with four-dimensional requests, one from the fifty-foot max building setback, the point-six floor area ratio, the max floor area and the max floor area to a single use. And then finally, the, the driveway width. We do have a, an update on those driveways from planning commission. Staff had originally included the turning radii, so they appear to be much larger, but after further review of the code, we actually do not include the turning radii. So they are just exceeding the thirty-foot max by five feet and eleven feet there. And then finally, two design flexibilities with that opposite orientation that I talked about. The, the code requires the front of the building to face the front of the lot, which is, which makes a lot of sense, but as I said, it doesn't in this case, so opposite orientation. And then thirty percent minimum brickstone facade. They are around ten percent on that front facade there. Quick recap from planning commission. This was originally tabled in June. Facade and site improvements were requested. The applicant came back and added nine windows to the building and addressed three of the four planned elements. Commission was then satisfied in, in July and approved the CUP and recommended approval of the site plan for you all tonight. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the proposed site plan with these seven conditions here, as well as recommending the approval of the dimensional and design flexibilities that I had gone through. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
You're just teasing us with that next picture?
If it comes up. I've got a few bullpenk, or slides for us if we need them, so, yeah.
All right. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So this is Port Evergreen, which is our industrial port. So having a building that has a loading dock is not out of the question, right? And when you look at the site, going through, and, because the whole point of the River Rapids overlay is when you're coming down Coon Rapids Boulevard, what you see. And so them orienting the building, so as you look through the Quick Trip site and into this building, you actually see the front of the building and it is the nicer view of that building versus, even if, I mean, the site couldn't handle it, but if, if you had loading docks back there, we wouldn't really want to see the loading docks from Coon Rapids Boulevard. So I'm not really opposed to having the loading docks at technically what is the frontage on Holly Street, because you're going into the industrial zone anyway. Seeing trucks in the industrial zone should be expected. Some of the different dimensional flexibilities, part of that is just the, how the site is laid out, where you're going to get the trucks in and out. You wouldn't want to have to do a cross-easement and have trucks going through the Fresenius Clinic parking lot, because that's where you're going to have patients coming in and out. So all in all, for this use on the site, it seems to make sense, you know, with the flexibilities that they're asking for and the design flexibilities. And I, I do appreciate the, the applicant when planning kind of said, hold on, you, you need to do some more work. And they came back with, you know, addressing the majority of the issues that planning commission had and getting us what I think is a decent product.
Yeah. Well, I concur. And I think for the, I think the planning commission and the developer for the work they did to, to bring this to us, and I have no, I have no problem with the loading docks right across the street from Magnum Trucking, you know, that seems like that makes sense. So I'm, I'm good. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor? I just had a question on, I'm going to find it here. It's the floor space requir, maximum floor space?
Yeah.
Can you explain that to us a little bit? It's double the ratio. What is, what kind of impact is that?
Are we talking about number three here on the slide?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, yes. So basically, since it's one, mainly one use within this building, the warehouse space, it will have some office space. That is why that number is so much larger than the fifteen thousand. Basically, that, that fifteen thousand more relates to office development, commercial development. This is not that. This is more or less a traditional warehouse space, so it wouldn't make a lot of sense for them to reduce their square footage.
Thank you.
So those are pretty much, we're going to see that anytime we're looking at a warehouse, then?
Anytime we're going to be looking at anything in Port Evergreen, pretty much, because it's, these are industrial buildings and the overlay is really, it goes the entire Boulevard.
Okay.
And, and so when you're looking at something, let's say on Hanson and Coon Rapids Boulevard, you're going to, you're going to be looking at something different, right?
It's not like-
It's just not quite a fit in some of those dimensional requirements when you go into industrial.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's not like we were trying to eliminate the use of warehouse space in this area. This is an industrial park, right?
Right.
Okay. That one just jumped out at me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Two, it's just that, so the port zoning and the underlying zoning would be industrial, but because it's close to the Boulevard, that's where it has the River Rapids overlay, which means it has to meet those higher standards of the things right next to the Boulevard. And because it's closer, you know, to the Boulevard, I mean, if it was across the street, it wouldn't have it. And that's where we've got to have that little bit of flexibility in our code, because you couldn't write something that would cover the entire length of the Boulevard for every potential thing that could go in there.
Appreciate that. I actually appreciate all of your knowledge of city code as it comes to planning commission and those types of things.
I've been doing that, you know?
Yeah.
So what, twenty-six years of that, so?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I'll just dumb the whole conversation down. I like it. No, yeah, I just, I appreciate everything they did with the facade in the places where it counts, right?
Yeah.
And I just really appreciate them working with our planning commission. And, yeah, I mean, it all makes sense. I mean, having the trucking and, you know, facing Holly, I mean, yeah, who the heck cares? It's a, you know, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of trucking going on there and it's a warehouse for Pete's sake. So it all makes sense to have that flexibility on the, on the floor space.
Does it make enough sense to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brody? And do this in one motion or two?
I'm going to wait to put in two.
All right, Mr. Brody.
Where do you want him to break it off?
Between the flexibility, I mean, the first seven or kind of the motion.
Okay, seven go with the first one. All right, got it. And then the rest are regarding flexibilities.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the proposed planned site. In case twenty-four dash twelve, make a motion to approve the proposed planned site with the following conditions. One, all engineering comments be addressed. All sustainability comments be considered. The applicant enters into a site security agreement with the city. All signage is subject to separate sign permits. Outdoor seating areas, trash receptacles near the main entrance and the bike rack be added to the site plan. Number six is the corresponding conditional use permit be approved. Number seven, corresponding Coon Creek Watershed district permits be approved.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Carry on.
I'd like to make a motion in case twenty-four dash twelve to approve the dimensional flexibility for max set, sex, setback, easy for me to say. Floor ratio, floor area ratio, max building area and max driveway width, with the design flexibility for exterior building materials and building orientation. The planning commission finds the modifications necessary to respond to site conditions result in better integration of uses and further the intent of the Port District.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to item ten. Thank you, sir. We're up to item ten, to consider a commercial tower application for new temporary and permanent wireless tower, City of Coon Rapids, one-one-three-one-six Foley Boulevard. Mr. Pastor is back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, one more from the planning team. So this is a request from the city. The city is planning to decommission and remove the water tower at the intersection of Foley Boulevard and Northdale Boulevard. There's currently a wireless tower on top of that wi, water tower with a, an antenna at a hundred forty-three feet. In order to keep wireless coverage the same as it is right now, SEH, the city's consultant for all things wireless, is proposing a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot tower to be located in place of the existing water tower and a temporary tower to be located just to the west of the existing water tower during the removal of the water tower. So the proposal is to build the temporary tower, remove the water tower, build the permanent tower and then remove the temporary tower, so that wireless coverage is, is never removed from the site. So here, if you can see it, there's a little red box showing where the temporary tower would be proposed to be located. It would be on the McDonald's property, at the location, the current location of their trash enclosure. The city does have an agreement with the owner of that property to locate the temporary tower there. And McDonald's has already removed all of their trash from that enclosure and is now locating it in that auxiliary building on the south side of their site. So that location is open for the temporary tower. The permanent pole, sorry about that, the permanent pole is proposed to be located in the exact same location as the existing water tower and is proposed to be surrounded by the ground equipment, is proposed to be screened by either a opaque fence or landscaping, depending on what city staff ends up recommending. But either way, the ground equipment is proposed to be screened. There's no way to screen the, the tower itself, but the ground equipment will be screened. So there are currently, there's currently only one antenna on top of the water tower. There were three at one point, three antenna in the past. And in the future, three antenna are proposed for the eventual permanent tower, one at one hundred and fifteen feet, one at one hundred and thirty feet, and one at one hundred and forty-five feet. And, and staff do approve of the use of one tower to, to co-locate multiple antennas. It is more efficient to do that than just having one antenna per tower. The current plan is for work on the permanent tower to be completed by summer of, or by the end of summer of twenty-twenty-five. So the temporary tower would be proposed to be up for just about a year to under one year. And the owner of the current antenna, AT&amp;T, did provide a, an exhibit arguing why the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot height would be needed for the tower to maintain existing service. With the existing antenna at one hundred and forty-three feet, one-hundred-and-fifty feet would be needed to maintain an antenna at that existing one-hundred-and-forty-three feet. This is just an image that SEH threw together to show what the tower would likely look like on the site in terms of height and location. And then they also provided a couple of pictures of very similar towers that are located elsewhere in the Twin Cities area. With that, staff are recommending approval of the commercial tower application for a proposed temporary and permanent commercial wireless tower, with conditions related to safety, which would essentially be required for building permit approval for, for any tower, as well as screening for the ground equipment around the tower. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Mr. Pastor, at the planning commission, it said there was two nearby, two nearby residents regarding health issues that we're talking about. The comments were from them. They were actually from the same house, though, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, well, there wasn't other neighbors there that I missed or anything?
It was one, one household, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Patson, you might not be able to name names, but I know that there are spots, right? Three other heights for antennas, 115, 130, and 145. Is anyone interested right now?
I would have to defer to our Public Works Director, Tim Hemmer, but I don't know if we are able to discuss whether any specific companies are interested.
Councilmember Carlson, council as a whole, there are currently, as you mentioned, one, one user of the facility, and as of today, there's not an interest by anyone to be on this tower immediately.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I think we need to maintain the cell coverage in the city. Well, you know, a pole is a pole. There isn't a whole lot of design to that. But I think, you know, it is a good place to put it, you know? They've had the water tower there, there'll be a pole there. So with that, in planning case 2418, I would recommend approval of the proposed temporary and permanent commercial towers with the following conditions. One, that all city structural requirements be met for both towers, including that towers be designed so that collapse will be confined to the subject property, if applicable. And two, sufficient landscaping to screen ground equipment from public view or an opaque fence to serve the same purpose be shown on the site plan as determined by city staff.
Second. Motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider joint powers agreement with Anoka County, or, yeah, with Anoka County for construction and maintenance of Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge, Project 24-6. We should be able to get through this one pretty quickly, right? Do you have any questions on this, or? Mr. Hanson, is there anything you want to cover on this?
Yeah, I could quick, just do a quick summary here for council. Thank you, Mayor. So this is joint powers agreement with Anoka County for the Coon Creek Trail Regional Pedestrian Bridge that was approved, a construction contract was approved earlier. The, the JPA just defines the, the terms of maintenance responsibilities, and the city will be responsible for all the maintenance, the operation, the eventual replacement of the bridge system, as well as any snow removal, painting, graffiti removal, maintenance of the aesthetic treatments and the lighting. And then as part of this, JPA as well, Anoka County will be contributing 250,000 toward the project.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to approve the execution of a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for the construction and maintenance of the Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard, Project 24-6.
Second. Motion by Carlson, second by Armstrong. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Related, item 12, consider a letter of engagement for Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge Construction Phase Services. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item also relates to the same project. This is for Kim Lee Horn and Associates to perform a construction phase services, services, as well as all the construction materials testing that's required for construction of the project. Kim Lee Horn helped us develop the plans and specifications, so we propose to be working with them through the construction portion of the project as well. And as I said earlier, our goal is to have the state cover as many of the costs of this work as possible.
Mr. Hanson, can you help me out? How much are we contracting with, how much are we actually contracting with Kim Lee Horn? How much are we gonna pay them, or is there a maximum amount, or?
So the total amount, it's a not to exceed amount. The total amount as stated in the letter of engagement is 614,560 dollars. That also includes Brawn intertechs fee for the construction materials testing. It's based on hours time spent on the project, so it's really going to be dependent on the contractor's pace of work, their organization, but we feel pretty comfortable that Ames Construction knows very well what they're doing and will work very efficiently, so it's a not to exceed amount based on estimated hours.
Very good. Sorry for not reading that in advance. I saw that afterwards.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I kind of have a similar question. Is it because that they're an approved contractor that we don't have to get bids for an award of this size?
That's a good question. Kim Lee Horn's really best suited to do this work because they prepared all of the plans and specifications in this case here, so they're really gonna be the, the firm that's gonna be able to best be able to supervise and work with the contractor through construction. So it's really a qualifications-based-
Okay. It's a professional service contract, so it's not subject to competitive bidding, and so, as Mr. Hanson pointed out, they went through the criteria and these were best, they were best suited for the work.
I would further add that they went through the competitive bidding process as part of the design component. So we did the RFPs in the beginning, now it becomes we want to educate another consultant potentially to finish the project that they started. So it was competitively bid initially. This is just an extension of those services.
Sure, yep, and I just wanted to make sure that, and I mean, they've done work for us many times, we're satisfied with it, so I'm, I'm good with that. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I make a motion to approve a construction phase services proposal and authorize the execution of a letter of engagement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for the Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard, Project 24-6.
Second. Motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this?
I'm just excited to see this moving forward, and I think it's gonna be a fabulous project, and I think our communications and team has worked to be able to make sure that this is beautiful, and I think the community will love it once we've got it in place.
All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I agree. I think this is gonna be a community landmark, something that I've kind of envisioned for that area for a long time, kind of an entrance to the city type look, and we're doing a lot of things that are gonna make it look real nice as well and really make it our own, so.
All right. If there's no more discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item 13 to consider a joint powers agreement with Anoka County Parks for water and sanitary sewer service. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In 2022, Anoka County Parks received grant funding to connect certain facilities within the Bunker Hills Regional Park to sewer and water. So those include items such as bathrooms, restrooms, the maintenance building that's on County Parkway A, and a dump station for the RV campground. The JPA outlines the maintenance responsibilities. Really, there's no costs involved with Coon Rapids here to the city. The water was extended previously to the maintenance building along County Parkway A north of 127th Avenue. That was extended about 15 years ago, and they're just gonna take off from that point into the park. It's gonna be seasonal for the water and sewer service that they'll be providing within the park, but ultimately, their sewer will connect to our lift station number 10 that's on Foley and 127th via, via a gravity pipe connection into the lift station. So city, Public Works and Engineering will be closely involved with the inspection and how that is connected in accordance with the plans. The JPA here allows for the connection.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to, to approve the attached joint powers agreement for the construction of water and sanitary sewer services for the Bunker Hills Regional Park.
Second.
Thank you. Let's just hang in there. Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 14, consider a joint powers agreement with the City of Andover for the provision and maintenance of certain sanitary sewer and water main services. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you. So this is another joint powers agreement. If council recalls, earlier this year, we did one of these with the City of Blaine. It was just to really codify and organize all of the different shared connections that we had along the City of Blaine. This is really very similar, although it's with Andover. So there are properties north of 133rd that Coon Rapids provides sewer service to, that are within the City of Andover. There's a couple residential properties on the north side of 133rd that we provide both sewer and water service for. And then more recently, and the resident is within our audience here, the owner of 13306 Gladiola Street that's in Andover also owns the property that's in, located in Coon Rapids, 2908 133rd Avenue, has worked with the City of Andover as well as Coon Rapids to provide water service from our system into Andover. So part of this agreement outlines the terms of how that is going to take place, and as soon as, one of the requirements that the City of Andover has and will have with the resident, the property owner, is part of their connection to our system, is that is, water becomes available in the City of Andover. It is not there right now. They will disconnect from the Coon Rapids system and then appropriately connect to Andover.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Just a question for Mr. Hanson. We, we have these kind of agreements with Anoka, don't we? I mean, don't we have some properties in Anoka that are connected to our system and the same, is it the same in Blaine? So this isn't without precedent, right?
Well, we just did one with Blaine. I would have to take a look to see what we have with Anoka. We'll probably be looking to do a very similar agreement if we don't already have one with the City of Anoka, but you're correct. Along Ninth Avenue, the very western reaches of Coon Rapids over by Mercy, there is shared services there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I, to me, it's just housekeeping and being good neighbors, you know? It's so much easier to have an understanding of, okay, you do this, I'll do this, this is how we, you know, work things out, when we've got these, you know, shared services, and it just means that there's no confusion for the residents who live on the boundaries, and I think that's good for everybody. So with that, I would make a, a motion to approve the JPA with the City of Andover for the provision and maintenance of certain sanitary sewer and water main services to properties located along the common city border.
Second. Motion by Geisler and a second by Griscoviac. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 15 is to consider a final design services agreement for Project 18-14, Trunk Highway 610 slash East River Road interchange. Mr. Hemmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. After being in a holding pattern for quite some time now on this project, we are set to move ahead, so as we were doing budget planning for 2025, and as we were looking towards completing final design after securing some additional funds, I thought it was important to really look at where that budget is. So with that said, we went back to TKDA, who again, like the last one, went through the competitive process to get us where we were. They were with us from the initial 1.5 million award. To date, they've spent about 1.1 million, 1.2 million on that project and almost got us to the 30% design. Then we had to redesign and redesign and redesign to go back to original design, to combine designs, and now we're ready to get back to the 30% plan, get it through the alternative analysis, go through the environmental documents, get the BNSF agreements in place. And so as we look to move forward now, we need to look at being fully funded, the same way we had to on the pedestrian bridge to secure state and federal dollars, you have to demonstrate full funding. So we wanted to make sure in our 2025 budget, we had adequate dollars to do that. So I asked them to put forth a new agreement to show me what it's gonna take us to get us to final design by about this time in 2025. So it's about a year-long process now to get us to the end, to make a shovel-ready. And in order to do that, we take the original 300,000 from the, from the original contract with them. We have 1.1 million remaining in state and federal dollars, so that gets us to about 1.4. That leaves about a $600,000 gap for the city to have to show on the books to accomplish that. We have to get back to Anoka County potentially for their participation. We've always pledged our, I think we said $2 million in from the local level. So I see this as a kind of putting that skin in the game, showing that we're there. We continue to push this along. We start to continue to get more funding for this. So it, it's a big number, and believe me, I had a little heartburn over this one myself. I, I think we've got right now what's approved by MINDOT, what's approved by the county, what's approved by here at staff level, that this is the right number that gets us to shovel-ready by this time next year. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I wholeheartedly recommend TKDA on this project to move forward, and, and that dollar amount is fair based upon all the minutia that you see in that proposal they put together, but I'm, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Questions of Mr. Hemmer?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
So, yeah, shouldn't we have 1.2 million remaining in state bonding? Didn't we get 1.5?
Councilmember Griscoviac, we have 1.5 to begin with, yes.
Okay.
And they've gone through about 1.2 of that, so that leaves about 300,000 left on that original.
Okay. And then, yeah, this is a big number, and we gotta move forward with this. We're a lot of skin in the game, and it's the right thing to do for our city for, you know, the next couple generations in front of us, right? The, let me ask this. You said this'll get us to shovel-ready, basically, right? And this is where we need to be. Does that include what we have, the, how can I say this? The negotiation that we have with Burlington Northern Santa Fe on the width of that bridge? There's financial considerations there, isn't there?
Yeah, Councilmember Griscoviac, this, this incorporates that as a design component, that it is a bridge widening. I'm wait, I'm currently awaiting that agreement from Burlington Northern, but following our tentative agreement at that point, it was they agreed for that one-time payment. Our caveat was that's fine, but you'll get it when construction happens, and they were agreeable to that. We just don't have it signed and executed yet. So this includes bridge widening based upon that. This isn't a construction cost. This isn't a cost to be incurred until construction comes. That will be added to the budget at that time.
And then one more thing, just for maybe the audience, because it's a huge project, but it's starting to move our way. It's starting to really look good for us because didn't, weren't we awarded the regional, the transportation funding? So can you speak to that a little bit?
We're currently sitting in a good funding position. The preliminary recommendation from the TAC was to go with funding option. I can't remember which one it was, but that would have funded this project. So it was unanimously recommended by the TAC that that's the funding option. The Met Council still, I believe, has to vote on that. I don't know why they'd go against a unanimous recommendation, so I am not counting any chickens yet, but we look very strong in that.
And then we secured the federal transportation corridor money, or?
Freight, so that would, that would put us to 20.8 million secured for construction.
Okay.
It's a little more than halfway there.
Yep, so I think that's important to know, that we've secured 20.8 million dollars on this project, and so we need this 600 in, you know, to get us, to get us there, so.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that the city council approve a letter of engagement with TKDA under its master consulting agreement in the amount of $2,9123 for final design of Trunk Highway 610 East River Road interchange and authorize appropriate staff to execute such agreement.
Second. Motion by Griscoviac and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Thank you for all the clarity that you two added to all of the funding on this.
There's a lot.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 16, and for whoever's here for open mic, this is the last item on our agenda. Item 16 is to consider agreements and Resolution 24-76 budget amendment for Project 24-21, miscellaneous compost. Mr. Hemmer, it says?
Mr. Mayor and council, this is a consideration of a budget amendment primarily. What's, what's been occurring at both the public works site here by the soccer complex and the South Yard down off of Evergreen is, over many, many years, leading back, not centuries, probably decades, any organic material that comes off of sites, our EAB, tree piling and stump grinding, it just kind of has all gone into a pile. It's organic. What's, what's it going to do, right? So then you add street sweepings to it, and over time, it just became larger. And we, well, we'll just bulldoze it and add more, and add more, and add more. And as, as we were looking at the iron-enhanced sand filter down at that site, we started to look at, well, obviously, this can't remain. And in my time here, I've been kind of charging Josh Peterson and myself as, what's the best way to dispose of this material that's been accumulating? You can't create a dump. You can't just let it go. And the dollars and cents that came to be, as you start looking at the material testing, and is it going to need to be landfilled, was sizable. And so we've been looking for years at what's the best solution for us. Number one, to not continue this practice, and number two, to clean up what already exists. We found a partner who is more than happy to take the material. We've provided him with the sampling that he asked for with regard to what's in it. He'll use it to do some compost out of it. He'll use it as cover at some of his facilities. He knows what the material is, and he's willing to accept that. So then it became, all right, now how do we get it to him? Because it's a lot of material. It's about thirty-three, thirty-four thousand cubic yards of material. So then it became, well, we're going to have to truck it. City could do that, but it would probably take us a year to make that happen, and we don't have the staff for that. So then we said, all right, well, now we need to truck it. And because we anticipate they're going to be running eight-hour days, five days a week, for three weeks. And that's considerable amount of time and energy to do so. So we started looking at how do we break this out? Number one, we found a willing person to take it. Then it just became, how do we make that happen? So working with the city attorney, looking at the options for what's competitive, what's open bidding on these types of contracts. We came to a solution that, what we believe is economical, at four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, for three separate contracts, one for loading, one for trucking, and the other for receiving the material. The dollars we're looking to do with this is out of the stormwater fund, because a lot of what it is, is stormwater-type materials with the street sweeping. And we've come in really good on our capital projects this year with one hundred and fifth lane, stormwater improvements, the recon numbers came in less. So we're not asking for more money. We're just asking to repurpose the existing excess capital expenditures for two thousand and twenty-four to satisfy the costs of this contract. And then going forward in the future, we're going to build into every project proper disposal, so we don't end up in the same place again. So we're looking for a budget amendment for four hundred and twenty-five thousand of the stormwater fund, repurposing capital dollars to award three separate contracts, one to Dakota Transport, one to Randy West Excavating, and one to the Revard Companies for receiving the material. That's a lot to digest, I understand that, and I'm, I'm very happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Hammer, is there another fund that we should be dividing this with, rather than taking it all out of stormwater? If we've got a lot of trees and stumps that we've brought in there from EAB and from everything else, it seems like we should be taking some of the funds from another source.
Mr. Mayor, if, if we wanted to talk EAB and trees, we'll probably be doing that again anyway, because we're already underfunded in that area. Any, any, any amendment I would ask of you today would very likely then have to go, we could look at the parks fund, we could look at stormwater, we could look at utilities. It could be shared across many. If you wanted to start getting into the general fund expenditures, that may change the conversation a little bit. I looked at, what is a majority of the material, and how can we fund it with dollars that already exist and not have to start looking at general fund dollars? There might be something at the end of the year, you want to talk about sweeping dollars in here or there. That is an unknown at this point. We've got a situation now where we have a willing person to take it and a good solution to get rid of it, and we can fund it out of there. That's my recommendation. If you want to parse it out in different ways, I could try to apply a percentage and figure out what that means, but we would be amending multiple budgets then as opposed to one.
Okay. I absolutely support this project. I think you've done a lot of work, and this looks like a great way to deal with it. And if we can talk later about sweeping in some funds from somewhere else, I guess I'm concerned that, that stormwater fund is self, self-supporting. And, and don't people with big parking lots pay into that stormwater fund? Isn't that part of what goes in there? And it just seems like, I guess I, I just want to make sure we're, we're being fair, and we're not overcharging. People pay a lot for that, so.
Yeah, Mayor and council, I mean, as it relates to the stormwater fund, coincidentally, we're going to be before you in September talking about our stormwater rate study and sort of the long-term capital projects that are in the hopper, and how we can best set up that fee to sort of plan for that. So we can, we can have some more of that conversation. I think the stormwater fund is best suited to absorb this cost right now. Partly, it's just the status of the fund. Partly, it's, as Mr. Hammer mentioned, that there were some savings in capital projects this year, and so that amount is there to be used. Perhaps as we get toward year-end, if, if it makes sense to sort of sweep in some dollars from excess budget, not, that's a bad way to phrase it, but unspent budget is a better way to state that. We could consider that at that time. As Mr. Hammer mentioned, EAB really isn't an option right now, and we, we need to find additional resources for that. So for the time being, I think this is the right decision. And then we can kind of have a separate conversation about what that stormwater fund looks like, and if we should reimburse a portion of that, I think we'd have an opportunity for that.
No, I, I know we don't have any EAB money, but I'm just saying, do we, if this is an enterprise fund, maybe we should make sure that what we're taking out of it is for that enterprise.
Sure. Yep.
Absolutely. Okay. Anybody have questions of Mr. Hammer on this, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griszkowiak?
Few questions, as you probably figured. But first of all, it's four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so it's a pretty big allocation. And so with that, and there's a lot of stuff. We've been putting stuff here for decades and decades, you said, and it's been building up. I'm, I'm just wondering, why haven't we heard about it? Why isn't it, why aren't we budgeting for it in two thousand and twenty-five or beyond? Why didn't we budget for it in two thousand and twenty-four? I would much rather see this in the two thousand and twenty-five budget, where we can talk about it, where we can talk about what we have to do for the future process, what the future process is going to entail, what's it going to cost. So, so that's my first concern, but there's no question there yet. I do have a question. Why can't we just, why can't we just leave this sit here? I mean, the, the lot was designed for this reason, and we're using it for that reason. Why can't we just let it sit there? What's the harm there?
Councilmember Griszkowiak, you've got high organic materials near stormwater ponds, and to some extent, it's become a de facto dump. And that is not allowed. It, it's no different than if we cleaned out a pond and just said, well, we're going to dig out the muck, and we're just going to pile it next to the pond, and just let it there and let it sit and decompose. That, that's not an option for us to consider. Because of the mix of material that's there and the potential for the contaminants that exist within it, you can't just bury it and call it good.
Well, no, I, I don't want contaminants going anywhere into our thing. But organic material in itself isn't a contaminant. I mean, stuff's organic and decomposing all over the city. Is, is there elevated contaminant levels that we know about that we need to address right now, today?
Councilmember Griszkowiak, we took grab, grab samples throughout the piles, again, just to verify for the receiving party what type of material they were receiving. And, and within that, there were no concerns that were associated. But that's pulling grab samples from the sides, and we're talking about thirty-three thousand cubic yards of material. So if you want to start digging into that pile, we're unsure what may be within that pile. And, and if you wanted to start a compost site like Anoka County has, there are ways you go about doing that. You don't just say, I've got vacant land, start dumping stuff on it, and we're going to call it a compost site. There, there are requirements for establishing those, and we haven't done that.
Okay. It just, just struck me that, you know, we did samples, and they said, yep, we'll take it. We can use it as compost or whatever. So it doesn't sound like we're leaching any kind of chemicals into the watershed. And if Sand Creek has this iron filter system back there, wouldn't, isn't that what that's designed to do, to kind of absorb that naturally and environmentally responsibly?
If it was naturally occurring, coming off the roadways and everything else, sure. But when you've consolidated that in a location immediately adjacent to it, it's not designed for that. It's designed to take the backflow, the extra flow that comes through the creek and into that pond as a stormwater drainage system. It's not designed as if, say you had a waste landfill or something, and you design yourself a, a stormwater treatment facility for that. That, that wasn't what the design of that facility was.
All right. Well, just?
I, it seems like it would have been good if they would have, if we would have been part of this conversation earlier.
Work session, maybe?
You know, it's like, we need to deal with this, and here's some of the options we're looking at. All of a sudden, they just go, here, we need to spend four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I support it. I think this is a good plan. It just seems like it kind of got dropped on us.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
And to me, it's, you know, trust staff that they know that, okay, this is a problem. And is it been a big enough thing to, to warrant a work session? Maybe, maybe not. But we've got a plan. We've got the funds. To me, it's, let's get this done. Let's do the right thing. Let's get rid of that material and do it in the right way. Because who's to say if we put this off, it might be fifty percent more, half, twice, you know? But we've got the, the bids now to be able to, to get rid of this. The other piece that I do think, though, is the conversation about the use of the stormwater funds. I would like to make sure that as we're looking at the two thousand and twenty-five budgets, and even at the end of the year, you know, typically, we do them in February, March-ish, when there are the final sweeps of what's going where, that we look and see where are potential other funding sources that could have participated in this, and ensure that some of those funds come back into the stormwater fund and handle that through the budgeting process.
Mr. Mayor?
Tim. Councilmember Griszkowiak?
Trusting staff, obviously. We trust staff. You guys are doing a great job on that. But amending in this amount, it's a lot of money. It's four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And to amend, and it's not like we're just amending to buy a, you know, a refrigerator at Bunker Hills Park. You know, this is, is a big deal. And again, I think we do need to think about the budget impact on this even long-term. Because what is our future process? If we can't dump our trees into that area, or if we can't do our sweet, street sweepings there, this is going to be more than four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And, and four hundred and twenty-five thousand itself, I think, you know, should have a, a discussion in our budget negotiations. And, and, you know, like I said, plus, it's going to be more than that. So for those reasons, I don't think we should be amending. I think we should be looking at the two thousand and twenty-five budget, which is right here. It's not even in there, the proposed, so.
Mayor and council, if I may, with regard to that, it, you know, the, the recency of this has more to do with that a solution was created for it. And so this time last year, as the budget's being developed, you know, it was sort of a known thing down the road. And Mr. Hammer has spent some more time on it in the last few months, and has sort of come up with this solution. And so it's a little bit awkward, admittedly, from that standpoint. It's, you know, it's a big number, sort of mid-year, you know, but, you know, sort of relative to some of the other larger projects we do, you know, this, it's a big number, but it's really not that big of a number as, in terms of the type of capital projects that get done on a fairly regular basis. You know, if you spread that over the thirty, forty years that things have been dumped at this site, you know, that number, it's big, but, you know, you divide it out, it's not that big. And I, you know, the eventual solution is going to be doing something like this with that material in the future, more on an ongoing basis. It's not that dissimilar for what we have to do, for example, at the golf course. They cut down trees all the time. Sometimes they have to sort of stockpile them on-site and have them hauled out, especially lately with EAB. Sometimes they have to do a burn pit, you know, with material, whatever. It's sort of the most practical at the time is, is what they choose to do. This isn't that dissimilar. It's just thirty years of leaving it in a pile, probably more than that, that we're kind of up against here. So admittedly, the timing is a little bit off, but as Tim and I were talking about it, we thought that, you know, we've got this set up, we've got a solution. Let's try to strike while the iron's hot, because it's going to make sense to just get it done. We can get it done this year. Then we've kind of got that monkey off our back, and we can sort of look forward to not creating the problem again after it's all cleaned up. So, you know, if there's, if, if council's concerned about sort of the, that portion of it, I assume, you know, we could, we could pause and have a quick conversation about it if you wanted to, to table it. But, you know, I think it's, it's a project that needs to be redone regardless of, of the, the timeline that you want to create for it. So, you know, I guess those are my thoughts. And, you know, I guess it's sort of on me if this came out of left field. It, you know, it feels like a project that's just, well, this needs to be done, so we're going to go ahead and do it. But, you know, given the, the size and scope of it, it might have made sense to have a quick conversation ahead of time. And I will add, I don't disagree. It's, it's not a drop in the bucket, that's for sure. And, and for the longest time predating my time here, everyone was budget-conscious. Well, just put it down there. That's a cost we don't incur. When it was inherited, then it became, this cost is getting larger and larger and larger. And, and we're talking to the scale of potentially ten times this dollar amount as we first started looking at this and the impacts to this material. So I've been working on this for several years, and it is going to cost us more in the future, absolutely. And that is in that budget book that you have sitting there. There are additional costs for disposal of street sweepings that didn't exist before. There are additional costs for having the contractors take those stumps away as opposed to, well, this will save us some money. We'll just go dump them over there. And then this pile becomes mixed with this pile becomes, and all of a sudden, all these little piles become one, and all that becomes unusable. And it just goes into a, it, it's a big nut to crack. It is. And, and Matt is right. It is kind of out of left field, but it isn't for me, and it certainly isn't for Josh. And I apologize for kind of bringing you into this at this point right here. But a lot of the things we tried to be budget-conscious for in the past are coming to light right now. And I don't want to say it's a bargain for what it could be, but I think this is a really good solution for us to start fresh and look to the future and pay for it as we go along.
All right. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griszkowiak?
Thanks for the information, and I trust your judgment on if it's a good value for us or not, and the fact that you've been looking at it for a few years. Let me just, for my own frame of reference here, this contractor is going to take our organic composting material from one area and go put it somewhere else, right?
He is going to either use it, number one, as cover on some of his areas of marginal. He's going to process it in some fashion and use it as compost on some of his other jobs. It, it's not going into a truck and being delivered to someone's backyard. He's got a lot of work and handling to do with that on his end, let alone what we've got to do to get it there.
Okay. That's good. And then my other, what was my other question? It was movement on that. Oh, and then, so we're going to have, we're going to have a big open area over there. What are we going to do with that space? Do you have plans for using that space for public works for anything else? Is there anything behind the scenes that we should know on that?
Councilmember Griszkowiak, what, what's going to happen is we're going to lower the elevation on that site considerably to take this mound. It was getting deep enough to the point that adding any more material, you start to get close to the overhead power lines in that area. So that's going to basically bring us down to neutral. And right now, if you've been to the Public Works Open House recently, you've seen the piles of trees that are accumulating back there from EAB. So this becomes now, let's get that off of the site behind there. And this becomes a home where those contractors on the EAB component of things have an easy in, easy out, and one place to go instead of handling this material multiple times.
Okay. Well, I think that's important for us to know, that we're still going to use this space, and it's still going to be used for housing organic material from the city. We'll probably just be a little bit more careful on what type of material goes in there, maybe not street sweepings or things of that nature.
Yeah, we continue to use the site on all of our recon projects. We just need to segregate the material, keep it isolated, keep it separate, and then you're able to use our recycled class five piles. That's great. That's a commodity. That's something we can use again. You have some sand burl off a job. That goes in there. That now can be reused again. It's, it's when it all got intermixed that we really lost control of how we can use it. So better managing the site, not only over here off one hundred and eleventh, but also down there, to allow us some flexibility on our construction projects to save dollars for that, and also use that material again and not have to waste it to some extent. And having one spot to put things as opposed to delivering it here only to find out there's not enough room to put it in a truck to move it somewhere else. It's just handling it too many times and the waste that comes with it. We need to be better.
All right. And I'm not belaboring the point, and I just appreciate the conversation. It's not like we want everyone to know all the sausage is made or anything like that. But I didn't have anything to know about it, and I had all these questions. So now I understand it a little bit better, to the point where it sounds like this now does become a pretty good idea. Because if we remove it out of there, it sounds like there's going to be savings in the future, because we're not going to be able to have to truck our new stuff somewhere at, at additional cost. So we can get this all moved out of here efficiently with the contractor that's willing to take it. And so, I've come around.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Hammer, so how's one hundred and eleventh doing? Is that up to the power lines, too?
No, no. One hundred and eleventh is primarily our recycled piles right now and a lot of trees. A lot of trees.
And so, yeah, it's, I understand Councilmember Griszkowiak's point about, and, and actually, Mayor Cook's point of, you know, wish we could have handled it outside of the stormwater fund, but the money is there, and we can get a jump on it. We can, you know, eradicate, what, thirty-plus years? what, 30-plus years of dumping things back there. And costs will certainly go up, but we're going to be smarter about how we bring things back there, too, right? So that help a little bit as far as how we reuse that material as well?
Absolutely. We're, we're opening ourselves up now, and we've already got the plans. We're going to have segregation blocks. We've paved some areas to make sure. We're, we're not going to repeat this. The concrete mixer you got us last time, that's going in its own spot. Some of that material can go in there. We just have to be better organized. And by the time we get to the end of the year and what dollars are left over, I'll be able to tell you what I believe is a fair percentage that maybe isn't stormwater-related, and you can make a decision then if you wanted to transfer dollars back and forth.
Thank you.
Here's, here's what I know. I think that it's, everything that we kicked down the road costs more, you know, so I don't think there's any point in doing that. And I think that everything that you've got lined up to get this out of here right now, if we took that from you, it would limit you in your day-to-day jobs. Because right now, you just want to be able to check this one off and make it all go away, and you're going to feel good about that.
I would feel good about starting fresh, something that, it's been hanging for a long time, trust me. And, and I thought it was going to be more than this. So when I got to this point, I was ecstatic to be in this situation, to be able to come here. And so, again, apologize for catching you off guard, but this is going to be a good thing for us to be able to start with a clean yard, start fresh.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I have one question for Mr. Brody. Can I do this in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. And then just for the people at home, whenever we're saying EAB, Emerald Ash Bor. So, I had to think about that. I was like, EAB? So, I would make a motion to approve Project 24-21 miscellaneous compost disposal and authorize staff to execute three standard agreements for contracted services as described herein, and a motion to adopt Resolution 24-76 amending the 2024 stormwater fund budget.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mayor, just one more thing, please. Is there, is there any money in the Clean Water Fund for remediation like this?
I didn't consider that, that's a good question.
Mark?
It may be, it may be worth checking with the watershed, you know, for, periodically they have grants on the order of 20 to 30,000, 50,000 maybe at the most that could help out with it. I think in the past, we've talked to them about a trommel screener and some other devices to help us with the situation down there, but I don't have the answer either off the top of my head, but it's something we can look into.
With regard to the Coon Creek watershed district, those are just smaller pass-through ones, and they're related to projects that are above and beyond what the typical requirements are. Whereas some government entities reward you for maybe not being as well-prepared. I haven't found that in the stormwater element yet, where if you're trying to secure funds for a project, it's to do something, it's not to go back and try to clean something that you probably should have been doing all along.
Okay.
And I'm trying not to draw that much attention to it.
Oops, did I inadvertently draw attention? Okay, thank you.
And, and Mr. Hammer, there's no chance of us coming up as responsible contributors if this is later found, I mean, I'm thinking like the, the big super fund cleanups, you know, when all of a sudden, they, they realize, hey, this is toxic stuff, and they go back to all the companies that have disposed of it over the years?
Chain of custody.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that isn't.
I guess I'll defer to Mr. Brody, but I certainly know that the person taking the material asked specifically for it to be tested, we provided them with the testing that they required. I believe the agreement state they know what it is they're taking, it's been tested in that way. So could somebody come back? I'm guessing the answer is yes, but I trusted Mr. Brody that he's made that agreement as, as well as he could.
I would agree that, I mean, it's not a super fund out there, it's mostly organic materials, it's been tested, they've agreed to take it as is.
Okay, it seems like it, just more obscure things have happened, so. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. And we are finally, finally, to the open mic portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to talk to council about, for open mic? Open mic public comment? Yes, sir. Come on up to the microphone and give us your name and address, and then you have three minutes. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. You are invited to express any concerns you may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids, and remarks will be limited to three minutes. So please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Alan Butler, 8438 Mississippi Boulevard, Coon Rapids.
All right, sir.
May I approach the council with this three-page, three-page handout?
Sure. Take a lesson, Mr. Brown, I didn't get four copies of the same page.
I got two. One back.
All right, and then I'll, I'll wait till you get rolling, and then I'll start your three minutes. How's that?
When I had assisted living license with the Minnesota Department of Health, and the address is 1052 95th Lane, they, they said that I would be able to get a, a campus license because of the properties are all close together, and there's not a drive-through traffic. And I'm, right now, there's three houses that I built in that area, 1020, 1036, and 1052 95th Lane. Up until this year, I had, with assisted living, I could have nine people. But when I got my license now, or with the city, the, all these properties have been licensed and inspected within the last 45 days, and I, they passed and cleared and I got license. And I'd like to be able to have the same amount of people in the, as I had with assisted living, which was nine. I rented this to a company by the name of Steppingstone, and they work mainly with people of need in Minnesota, in Anoka County. So I'd like to be able to go from six, where, well, I had nine before, and I'd like to go back to nine with each property, starting at 1057, I mean, 1052. Okay, and the next page, oh, the reason I am, I'm asking that, on the bottom of the first page, it shows that the one bedroom I have, there's 295 square feet, and I believe that 75 square feet is enough to get a license for a bedroom, a legal bedroom. On page two, that, those other three were new houses that I built. This page is 1057, which is in the same campus, and it's an older home, I remodeled it, and there's 10, there's 10, it's got, it's 10 bedroom now and five bathroom. And I'd like to request to have two extra bedrooms. On the bottom, there's, there's, each one of these bedrooms on the very bottom of that page, the first one, the walkout basement, I have a picture of that, but it's in my phone, I can get it out by, it wasn't, it's 244 square feet in that one bedroom. And, and the other bedroom is 296 square feet, and I'd like to be able to make that, to get two more, two more bedrooms out of that, one bedroom for each room. And then, on the last page, it's, I asked Steppingstone to, to define a little bit about their company so I can present it to you, and that, that's, that's what that is. And I hope I haven't gone over my three minutes.
So, Mr. Butler, well, you are a little over, but that's all right, you sat through a lot of meeting to get here, so. I, I think what, what you probably need to do, and I'm sure the response you'll get from staff, will be you'll, you'll need to actually appeal something, you must have, you must have some denial of some sort, and you would make a formal appeal, I would believe.
I'm not, I'm not sure, we'd have to check, I don't know the status. I've had some conversations with Mr. Butler, I know Mr. Katterman has had several conversations with him, so I'm not sure what status he's made or what request he's made of city staff.
Okay.
He's made more inquiry into sort of his business operation or his model, his business model, I guess, versus this type of request. So I'd have to confirm before we said what he needed to do next.
So, Mr. Butler, so we've heard you, and we have this now, and they will prepare a response, and my guess is that'll give you some, some direction.
Thank you so very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming in, sir. Is there anybody else here to address council for open mic this evening? All right, then we will close that portion of the meeting. What the heck, it's almost 9:30, there's only 16 items on the agenda.
Wow.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Um, Councilmember Geisler?
I will make it quick.
That's all right, no, that's all right.
Yeah, well, we've got just a couple of things. So I'll, I'll start with the simple one. Thursday, the 8th, we have our summer concert series. That's the concerts at the Coon Rapids Regional Dam that start at 7:00 PM. There's Bring a Lawn Chair and Enjoy the Concert. This one is going to be Revolution Five. So, but the big news-
Very popular Beatles tribute band.
Yeah.
Yes.
But the big news is why are we meeting tonight, which is a Monday? Thank goodness it's Monday, because we wouldn't want to be doing this in this weather tomorrow, is tomorrow is Night to Unite. So if I can hand it over to our Assistant Police Chief and have, get a rundown of all the fun things that are going to be happening for Night to Unite.
Deputy Chief Jacobson, what do you got for us?
Mayor and council, thank you. This year, we have about 10 more parties scheduled than we had last year, we're up to about 105. Look for police cars, fire trucks, public works vehicles, ambulances, to be going all over the city, visiting the different parties and neighborhoods, and we just look forward to seeing everybody out and about tomorrow night. Last I checked, it's supposed to be beautiful.
Yep, yep. And, and I'm not sure if you have other things, but to that point, if you don't already have a neighborhood party planned, it's too late to officially plan one, so find one of your neighbors that has one and join them. Because this is, it's an amazing opportunity to meet your neighbors, to find out what's going on around, and to, if you've got any questions of staff or whoever happens to come from the city, ask them. They might have answers.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Just wanted to add to Councilmember Geisler's announcement of the Revolution Five on Thursday. This is the last concert of the summer, and so if you haven't had a chance to get out to the, the Coon Rapids Dam, it's a great time to get out there. And, yeah, they're very popular, and it's our last shot for the summer to go to these concerts. It's a great opportunity.
All right. And our farmer's market is still on Wednesdays. Ms. Lenzmeyer?
Mr. Mayor and council, a reminder that absentee voting is underway for the August 13 primary here at City Hall. We're open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, and will be open this Saturday, the 10th, from 9 to 3, if you'd like to vote ahead of Election Day. And the polls will be open in all 22 locations from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, August 13th.
Very good. All right. Any other, any other business to come before council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Armstrong?
Didn't our illustrious staff win an award for Rocky? I thought, I saw that in print somewhere.
Yeah, I read that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Stephanie's gone, I don't know. Mr. Stammwettel?
Uh, Mayor and council, I, let me try to recall this, but yes, the staff was awarded with, I can't remember the name of the Minnesota Association of Government Communicators or something along those lines. Primarily, what they, what they won for was the process by which they came up with Rocky. It was a very involved process with the council, with the community, with staff, very iterative to come up with something that everybody loves now and is, is before us. And so sort of from the front, the start to the end, they were recognized for the exemplary efforts to put Rocky together, and then for successful campaign, campaign since then. So I'll, I'll have to dig into my notes and find out exactly what it was called, but it was something along those lines.
And I assume Rocky will be traveling around tomorrow night for Night to Unite?
Yes, I think, I believe so.
So. Okay. All right, any other business to come before council?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.